Okay, I'm back. It looks like there's been a couple of minutes and we have our agenda item for our special board meeting up on the screen. And with that then, I'm going to call to order the February 2nd, 2021 special meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board. And as announced earlier, but to be announced now, we are live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. If you choose to click on that for live captioning. With that then, I'm going to call roll for the record of board members and I'll start with you, Ms. Munoz, as our student trustee. Are you present? I'm moving on. Ms. Bittersmith?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Narini?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
Present.
With my presence seven, we're a full complement of board members in attendance. So this evening, we're here, we're going to be provided with a first reading of the 2122 Faculty Administration Collaboration Team Agreement. Before we move into that, I want to comment that we have had two previous work sessions on the fact agreement. Though Ms. Smith and Ms. Bittersmith were not board members at the time, they were certainly invited to be listening into those work sessions. And I hope they had an opportunity to at least be present for one, if not both of those work sessions. But that brings us to this evening again for the first reading of this document. And with that, Dr. Gonzalez, I move the conversation to you for this.
Thank you, President Sullivan. Members of the governing boards, CEC guests, welcome to the special meeting to discuss the final draft of the faculty agreement. As you previously stated, we've had previous work sessions for providing updates of an incomplete faculty agreement and we juncture, we would take feedback from our governing board and implement those changes or answer any questions or take any feedback that was provided into this document. Today, we're pleased to provide a final draft in its complete form. And I want to thank members of the current fact team, the Faculty Administration Collaboration Team, and those who previously previously served to get this document to where it is today. And then, and thank all of the employees that have weighed in on this. This is an example of groups of people coming together to collaborate on an effort that is of great importance to our organization. So with that said, I will turn it over to the fact team. Thank you.
President Sullivan, this is Greg Peterson. Members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, CEC and guests. I like, I get to speak on behalf of our amazing team who are all present this evening. And thank you again for your continued support of the work we have been doing in advancing a new faculty agreement to be hopefully adopted for the July 1st, 2021 timeframe. What we have for you this evening, we thought it would be most prudent to revisit the presentation that we shared in October at our first reading so that we were consistent in our messaging. And then we have some additional information to provide. If we go to the next slide, please. You know, I really want, I really appreciate Dr. Gonzalez comments about the mighty work of our team. You can see our fact members here. I also want to call out Eddie Jenna, who has been a critical member of our team and has stepped away in a different position. And Jose Aguñaga has joined us. So we, we continue this work very, very grateful for all of our members. Next slide. So this evening, again, we'll briefly review the faculty agreement timeline and process and then talk through the documents we have provided you and some of the formatting. So as we look at our faculty agreement overview timeline, next slide. This is a new slide for the board. We tried to give a sense of the, the top changes, the themes that emerged in the work that we've done in the new faculty agreement. Again, the faculty agreement is a consolidation of the residential faculty policies, the previous document for residential faculty and the adjunct faculty handbook. And so in this document, we are seeing a greater involvement, inclusion of adjunct faculty. We have provided space in the new faculty agreement to allow for the work that is being done on a compensation plan. We have more clearly articulated leadership roles for our faculty in order to provide greater consistency and support. We have built in space for innovation and to encourage more innovative practices across the colleges and the district. And in order to build more towards transparency and efficiencies, we have developed a tool using charters that will assist in helping better communicate how our decision-making processes are being made across our colleges. Next slide, please. As we shared previously, this is just a quick overview that give you a sense of our timeline. So in January 2019, the governing board through resolution formed the Faculty Administration Collaboration Teamwork Act. And then the first version of fact, which included two residential, two adjunct faculty and two administrators, worked in really bridging the residential faculty policies and the adjunct faculty handbook together, building the, the new structure of our document. We had a delay in the summer of 2019 and then came back together as a team with an expanded fact. So we brought on nine members. And we reworked 19 of the 27 articles in the new faculty agreement and presented these to the governing board in October. The first group in October, the second in November, and the final in February. We were granted an extension in February in order to finish the remaining eight articles. We worked through the, the spring and summer and did our final loop outs in September and met the timeline the board had given us to come back in October with a final draft with anticipation originally that the, the board would consider adoption in November. Knowing that changed, we just wanted to give you a sense of the timeline that we were working under. Next slide. Just really quickly again, this, this work was done very quickly, but we made a concerted effort to ensure that we, our constituents be able to provide feedback. So we did work closely with looping out to our senior councils, our, and our leadership at the district office. And to make sure that that was considered in our drafts. If you go to the next slide. Our residential faculty also were very diligent in, in getting broad feedback from faculty at all 10 colleges. And really helping us consider that as we looked at updates and modifications to our original drafts. And then the, the next slide shows that we did similar work with our adjunct faculty. Again, really along the way, trying to provide opportunities to, to vet the, the language that we were developing. If we go to the next slide. You can see that we did, as I mentioned previously, we had looped out these articles along the way. So you can see how we had grouped them. Our first loop out in October and then November, and then the January, February timeline. And then our final modification of articles in last September, September 2020. And so you'll see that we did provide the governing board with a review of all the articles and then the full document in October. Go to the next slide, please. I want to take a moment here and talk through the documents we've provided to you this evening. So in addition to the PDF of this PowerPoint presentation, we have a document that is entitled the, I want to make sure I get this right, what we've titled it, that, that the faculty agreement final from 2020 at 1001. So that is the October 1st document. This is the one that has the formatting, which includes the comments, the, the notate, the notes section in the document. And I'll, I'll take a moment to talk through the formatting of those notes. We, between October and February, we were able to clean up a few small areas of language. And so we do have an additional addendum with some of those minor changes. That's the faculty agreement additional changes addendum. And then finally, we were able to remove all of the comments and give you a, a clean version of what the faculty agreement would, would look like once posted after adoption. So those are the differences. And that's the, the fact faculty agreement final version from 2021 0202. So that gives you a sense of the documents we've provided. And how they're different. One of the comments we received early on, and we understood was the, the complexity of integrating two different documents together and helping the board to understand where the changes were being made, where existing language was moving from the residential faculty policies, the RFP. And so we came up with this formatting model for the governing board that would have a sidebar with comments. So you'll notice that the article language is on the left side there. And then on the right side reflects the, the comments and changes. So you'll see any numbering there. The RFP will reflect where that language came from, if there are no changes or where there are changes. Things are italicized where they have been deleted, for example. The, and then if you'll go to the next slide. We've highlighted it in text and text in red that reflects new languages. So it stands out better. It's easier for, for you to identify. The, we did want to note that there is language that's highlighted in red that was previous language existing in the adjunct faculty handbook. But we chose the RFP language to be our base language. So anything newly added to that, we did put into red. So we're, we're hopeful that, that this formatting assisted the governing board in being able to, to more easily identify where the changes were made in the document. Again, it did make the document a lot longer. And so the clean version is more reflective of the actual length of the document. And then the addendum has the same formatting as you're seeing here. Next slide, please. I, I need to apologize. We've been so focused on, on cleaning up our language and making sure all the edits were correct in our documents that we missed a couple of small ones in this presentation tonight. The, we still do have the, the email available. It's actually fact@CGC.edu is what was created. And, and that is shared with all of our board, with all of our team members. So as questions come in, we work together to source the answers and then respond back through the board secretary through, to, to provide this information to the governing board. We can also provide additional information as the board sees fit moving forward. You know, again, we are so thankful for all of the support that we've been provided. We're, we're excited to, to see this amazing work come together and move forward. And we look forward to helping assist you in answering any questions as we, as we may. And I think that's our last slide.
Thank you very much, Dr. Peterson. And in particular, thank you to the team that worked on this. We've had examples of a lot of teamwork this evening, and certainly this has been a long-term project and your team has held together. I'm so sad. Congratulations and for the product that you produced. The other piece, I want to thank you for listening to the comments that we have raised in previous workshops and your accommodations to answer those questions as well as accommodate shifts and changes in the faculty agreement that may have come from some of further discussion. And those are represented in the final draft document. And my other comment would be though there were time gaps and others, you did stick to the timeline in terms of having your document finished and presented to us in another workshop in November. It was the board who postponed the decision-making until this year. And one of the interests of the board in discussion with the past, some of our previous board members was that we wanted the opportunity to engage our new board members since this document would be going forward in, stand to be put into effect in July of 21. With that, I am going to then rotate through board members to ask if they have questions. But I'm going to start with our new board members who have not had the opportunity to do that. And then we'll conclude with those of us who have been present and I had the opportunity to ask questions in previous work sessions. So with that, I'm going to ask you, Ms. Smith, to start us off. If you have any comments or questions on this agreement during this first reading, period.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you for the presentation and for the work of everyone who has been working on this diligently. I appreciate also the summary slide about the top five changes, since there are many moving parts in the document. I was hoping Dr. Peterson could elaborate on some of the tools for innovation that have been incorporated in a little bit more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson.
Definitely, President Sullivan, board member Smith, the, I would say probably one of the most obvious places is Article Six. And so if I'm going to scroll down real quick in here. That would be page. Article Six would be page 34 in the, in the, the 2020 1001. So the, the, the version that has the included formatting notes. In this, this document, what we did was provide greater opportunity through a couple of different tools. First, through the memorandum of understanding that gave us greater ability to respond more quickly as challenges or opportunities arise for the district. The, the second piece on there is the enhanced variances. So this gave us opportunities to the variant, the variances to, to allow for additional innovations that could be done at the colleges that would provide flexibility with, within some, some distance from the, the constraints of the, the faculty agreement in general. So it allowed for us to try some things out and then create a process for us then to bring that back and to have it inform the future work of the development of faculty agreement so that we can adapt, adopt some of those best practices. And then the, the final piece there you'll see in, yeah, is a nod towards the existing college plans, which is another space that has allowed for some innovation, some different practices at the college level. And then again, capturing and trying to elevate some of the innovative work that happens in the departments and divisions through the charters. So that, that's one example area of where we've, we've really built in tools and emphasize those tools to provide us flexibility and thinking differently and working differently as we move forward.
Thank you very much. Certainly we've experienced during the pandemic how important it is to be flexible and to be able to have these adaptive memorandum of, memorandum of understanding and ways to make sure we can leverage our talent in adaptive ways. Seems really promising. My follow-up here, do you have an example of a time when if a variance had been available, it would have been used? Or a time, a situation that you could share that you anticipate where the variance will be helpful?
So I'm looking through the, so some of the examples that we had come up with in the notes section, and this is on page 35. No, so that we had discussed would be opportunities. Are they in here? I have my slides there. Okay. Would, would be opportunities, for example, to potentially structure a department a little differently, leveraging adjunct faculty in different leadership positions. It could be in, in how we structure a potential program in response to an industry need. So in a partnership with an employer. So the, some of these spaces where, where we have faculty who are very interested in thinking differently at the department level. And if we gave them the space to think that those, those things out and to pilot them, that they could be very beneficial. So those are a couple of examples where it really would be in response to, to student demand, to employer growth. Some of these opportunities, for example, not, for example, the work we're doing with artificial intelligence is very much a partnership with Intel. You know, so as we encourage industry partners to invest in, in supporting those instructional programs, there could be opportunities in those spaces for us to leverage our faculty differently.
Thank you. I really appreciate the example and I do not have any other questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Bittersmith?
Thank you, President Sullivan, and thank you, Dr. Peterson. I did have the opportunity to listen to the two work sessions, but I will confess to you that the red line version that you have prepared has been extremely helpful to me as a first time board member. So I thank you for that in the notes. I do have sort of a generic question because I understand, I believe I understand the purpose of incorporating language from the adjunct faculty manual into, into this process. What, the handbook, I should say, into, into this agreement. Can you highlight for me, are there any substantive changes as a result of this integration of the two documents into the role of adjunct faculty or benefits to them or responsibilities for them? I can see some of those. Obviously I can see language integrated into the red line, but I'm curious to just get a general overview. Is this changing the role of adjunct faculty in your, in your belief?
President Sullivan, board member Bitter Smith, the, yes, this is where, where you'll see the, the most significant changes. For examples, in Article Seven, you'll see that there's greater inclusion of adjunct faculty in, in the, the involvement of decision-making in the participation in departments and divisions. And so really ensuring that, that there's more input and, and involvement in those conversations around how decisions are made, how the divisions departments are organized and how best to support students. The, there is in, I want to say up here. In Article 19, there's an expansion of evaluation and development opportunities. So further investment in the professional growth of adjunct faculty has been built in as well. I, I'm glancing, I'm glancing to see as my, as my amazing colleagues text me other examples that really, really, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm seeing a potential, and I, I, I don't know whether this is new or just a transfer from the existing handbook that some faculty can be more limber or be reassigned to other roles without the same cumbersome process. Am I correct about that?
So, so much of that has came from existing language that has been built into this. The, especially the flexibility around adjunct faculty. But we have made efforts to create greater transparency in those processes.
And then obviously it looks like there's a continued movement towards trying to integrate the faculty representation and the adjunct faculty representation to be more collaborative. Am I correct about that?
Yes, in the sense of, our, our hope is that we can continue to create an environment where administration, adjunct faculty, residential faculty are working more cohesively together and ensuring we're meeting the needs of our students and our community. And so, you know, one of our emphases in this work has really been the develop, the further development of the inner, the interest-based problem solving, which is really a resource that has been in the district that we're, we're hoping to leverage more. So that, that's our hope. Our hope is that we can really continue to focus together better on serving our students.
Thank you.
Ms. Bittersmith, do you have any further questions or comments?
I, I don't. I may have more as I work my way through. And again, I really do appreciate the red line version. Thank you for the time and effort that was done and putting that together. Particularly to me, it may not be for continuing the board members. For me, it's very, very helpful. So I appreciate that.
I think we all appreciated it, which is one of the reasons we kind of inquired that that would happen or be put together in this way. It's been helpful for all of us, I believe. The other thing I want to comment is certainly the second reading will be on February 23rd with a potential action item to approve the agreement. With that, if there are further questions or clarifications, those can be managed in timeframe between the first read and the second read. So certainly if there's further discussion needed on this issue around the integration or the aspects of adjunct faculty, residential faculty, that would be an opportunity for that to be framed with information to be given to you prior and all of us as board members prior to that. So I'm going to move on. I'm sorry, did I interrupt someone?
No, I'm just saying thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure. All right. I'm going to move on through other board members and Mrs. McGrath.
Did you say McGrath?
I said, Mrs. McGrath. That's you.
Okay. I couldn't quite understand you. Thank you.
I apologize.
I'm a little bit concerned because the state of Arizona says that government cannot enter into a collective bargaining agreement. They don't want us to get into trouble. There's a few areas here that can be identified as being part of a collective bargaining agreement. The reassigned time has been adjudicated because of the reassigned time for the police department and was don't know if I want to call it illegal, but it, it was told the police department, you cannot do any reassigned time. It's public. So you can't do that. So you can't do that. Also, in the compensation for time, I think that would be in a collective bargaining agreement. The compensation for delegated duties would be in a collective bargaining agreement. The faculty determining pay and raises and having a salary placement review board, I think would be in a collective bargaining agreement. The honorium payments and the benefits, sabbatical leave, and the determination that the workforce shall be 60% residential and 40% adjunct. I don't think that is proper for employees to determine who the employer hires would also be in a collective bargaining agreement. And disciplining the faculty. So I'm really concerned with these documents that has many things in it that I think, I don't know if I want to say violates state law, but certainly are not in agreement with state law. And I hope we don't get into trouble for these. I wonder if maybe one of these things should be changed. And also, I'm concerned about, from what I can gather reading this, faculty is to work 20 hours a week. And I know that at ASU, they have a 40-hour week. And I'm wondering why we have this discrepancy between our employees and ASU. For the answers.
Sorry, I was on mute. Dr. Peterson is, their attorney works with you that you could have answered some of those questions? Or can you keep those questions at the forefront and send an answer to all board members in the ensuing week?
President Sullivan, yes. We have been working with our Office of General Counsel. They have reviewed this, and I will reach out with them to provide additional information.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath, would that be helpful for you?
Yes, it would. And I also wonder why we have this discrepancy between the 30-hour week and the 40-hour week with ASU. Do we pay that much less or do we pay an equal amount? I'm interested in that because that too seems to me would be part of a collective bargaining agreement. Thank you, and I'll look forward to the answers.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then from Mrs. McGrath, Dr. Narini?
No questions, just want to thank and let the team know how much I appreciate all the work that they put into this. I know it's, they had a time crunch and they had lots of roadblocks coming through since we got started on this. So I really appreciate all the work that they put into it and efforts. And thank Ms. McGrath for pointing out the, you know, for insisting on the red line of the document. So just thank you all for all your help and all your work.
Thank you, Dr. Narini. Dr. Thor?
I'll just join with Dr. Narini in thanking everyone who put in tremendous hours to get us to this point. And also to thank the team for looping out to so many constituency groups to make sure that we have before us a document that will be very workable. And we can't let pass how historic it is for this district to have a joint agreement between the residential faculty and the adjunct faculty. And I certainly look forward to our regular board meeting this month and the adoption of this agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Ms. Nguyen?
Doctor, I, Dr. Thor said what I wanted to say about the adjunct faculty and the full-time faculty being together on the same page. I think that is historic, and I think it's really important. I also want to share Mrs. McGrath's concerns, though, to make sure that the agreement, and this happened prior to me being on the board, but I know there were issues regarding collective bargaining. And I want to make sure that we, in fact, with release timer, however that is worded in here, and I have not gone over the latest version with all the red changes. I started on it today and didn't get through at all. I want to just make sure that we don't have something where it sounds good, we like it, but then it hasn't met somebody's legal standards. So I don't know how we take an agreement like that and draft it. I know originally, our former counsel, Ms. Cooper, served on this. I don't know who from Legal is dealing with this document, but I think it's important. So, and I do want to thank everybody who's worked on this. It is a, it's been a long time, it's been a lot of work, and I'm glad that we are to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. To my comments would be, again, similar to what I stated earlier, and that was to thank everyone for their diligent work on this. It seems like it's been a long time. And I would expect that all of the work that has been put into this has been time well spent to get to a historical agreement in many ways, but also an agreement that we can keep moving the district forward with. Hesitating to end my statement on a preposition, but anyway, I do think then there are probably a couple lingering comments or questions. Certainly, Ms. Bittersmith's questions around the adjunct faculty, residential faculty has some further need of clarification, and I understand that will occur. Mrs. McGrath and Ms. Nguyen's comments about the collective bargaining perspective. And would, it would be helpful, again, to have acknowledged that there's an illegal review of this, but there may be another way to put that in writing so that we have that information is so we can move forward. The other thing I would like to suggest to board members, we again, as I stated, have a little time between now and the second reading, which would be February 23. To that end, let's say that in the next weeks by February 9, if you have any questions, please put them in writing and submit them through Dr. Gonzalez's office, Elsie and Dr. Gonzalez. And then the faculty group can address those questions and get back to us, I hope, within a week after that in writing so that we can move forward with shared knowledge of further inquiries, if there are any. So any closing comments from board members on this item? Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comments?
President Sullivan, members of the board, again, thank you for your time and feedback. We appreciate your comments and questions.
Thank you. And again, thank you to Dr. Peterson and all of the folks who have made this presentation and this document possible. So board members, I want to remind you that our next meeting is February 16th at 4:30. We'll have agenda review and possibly another work session to be announced. But mark your calendar in that time. And then we will follow with our regularly scheduled board meeting on February 23 with the possibility of a work session prior to that. So prior to the meeting at 6:30. So again, keep your calendars open at 5:00. There's more to come on those items. With that, I want to thank everyone for your spending so much time with us this evening. We started at 4:30. It's now 7 o'clock. That's a long time. You probably are hungry. Then, so with that, keeping in mind the song that we started with this early afternoon, late afternoon. Keep breathing and be healthy and good night. So thank you all.
Good night.
Meeting is adjourned.